Your short list. I would like to reconvene the June 10th meeting of the City Council, Newport Beach. And could we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. There is no closed session report this evening.
I would ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Daigle, and then the invocation after that by Councilman Keith Curry.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Our Father and God, we, your children, gather today to ask your blessings upon our community, to ask for your wisdom in the decisions that we make, to ask for compassion to those less fortunate than us, and to ask that we would always keep in mind the public good, that we would strive to make this a better place for all who live here. In your name we pray. Amen.
This evening, we have a presentation of the Mayor's Youth Council, and Jonathan Harmon is going to walk us through this. I think you have some students to introduce.
I sure do. Mayor Hill, members of the council, thank you for having us this evening, and good evening. We'd like to recognize the 2014 Mayor's Youth Council this evening. A hard-working group of kids. I think you'd be very proud of this group. Very service-oriented, very involved in the community, and a great group of kids. We had 62 of them this year that went through the Youth Council program. So, a lot of involvement, a lot of moving pieces, but they did very well. Very driven, very hard-working group of kids. With me tonight, I have Arthur, and Natalie, and Nicole to walk you through our presentation of what they did this year, and most notably, our mayor's, or, I'm sorry, our Youth Government Day, which was our big event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council, for hearing us tonight. So, basically, the Mayor's Youth Council, our purpose is to represent the voice and viewpoints of teens while striving to benefit the quality of life in Newport Beach by creating experiences that react to teens and youth in our wonderful community. So, basically, what we hope to strive to do is to provide a direct line of communication between the youth and the mayor, as well as you, the council. It is also to provide an effective way to organize events and activities for the youth of Newport Beach, and to promote youth involvement and interest in community affairs, such as policy in the city, as well as helping those in need in the city of Newport Beach. Nicole?
Some of the things that our Youth Council does is we volunteer at various places. This year, we volunteered at the Soup Kitchen. We have Natalie here, who does the Friday Night Club every Friday. And we have many guest speakers come and talk about other events that we can carry out. And we had a Youth Government Day this year that went very well. I'm sure a couple of you members were there. And the Environmental Action Corps is a group of Youth Council members. There's about 25 of us, and we have worked on various projects, improving the environment of Newport Beach. One that we're working on right now currently is the plastic bag restriction in Newport Beach.
All right. So, basically, Youth Government Day was-
Was that a violation of the Brown Act, anyway?
I'm sorry, Mayor Hill, for any infractions that we committed. So, basically, the pinnacle of our year was Youth Government Day. It was on March 14th. And basically, what Youth Government Day is, is it's a day in which we shadow leader, council members, the city manager's office, the city attorney, and other departments of the city, to learn more about what they do on a day-to-day basis, and the issues that they face in each department. So, right here, you can see is the students that served on the city council, shadowing Mayor Protem Selich. Here is Mayor Protem Selich explaining to us the general overview of the city of Newport Beach, how the city government breaks down. Here, we have two of our members with Human Resources, as well as the city's attorney's office. And, let's see. So, basically, at the end of Youth Government Day, we have a mock city council meeting. And throughout the year, we picked two issues that face the city and the city's youth to discuss and ultimately take a vote on. So, the first one we did was parking around Cronedomar High School and Newport Harbor High School. I believe on that, we came to a conclusion that more research had to be done, and we would consult the school district about such issues. The second was blackball regulation on the beaches of Newport Beach, especially on the peninsula, which was very eventful, and we felt that it affected many of the youth of Newport Beach.
So, what was your conclusion? Should we have more beaches without the blackball?
I believe, I, this is just off the top of my head, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had concluded that blackball in certain areas, we should make the restriction more lax. But again, we'd have to check with Jonathan and Janet for the exact breakdown of that.
We have recently been recognized, our Youth Council, by the NMUSD School Board. Some goals for our council this year, we enhance participation with an emphasis on individual commitment, and we'd like to increase member diversity and school representation, as well as align inclusive practices with policy, and continue to be a positively recognized force within the community, working for its benefits.
How many schools were represented this year?
I believe we had five represented, so, including Modern Day this year, which was a new one.
And we'd like to give a special thanks to Mayor Hill and Mayor Protem Selich, and Karen Yelsey.
And on behalf of all the Newport Beach Mayor's Youth Council, we'd like to say thank you for your continued support of our organization and for the youth of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I hope that when you go into TV and radio announcing, that you will remember us here in humble Newport. I would offer you just one bit of public relation terminology. When we talk about city staff, they're not broken down, they're organized. So, but thank you for your efforts. I hope it was a good educational experience for you. And getting involved early is important, and staying involved is important.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, just real quickly, because I recognize a lot of these faces from when I was mayor, and they were serving on Youth Council. Do most of the members stay through the three or four years?
They do, Councilwoman Gardner, they do. All the way on up, we accept freshmen, and many of them stay throughout the program, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I thought it was a terrific experience working with the group, tremendous group of kids. And the, I think when they started talking about the firings, when I saw that they were going to continue it for further study, I said, "Yeah, they're really getting it what city councils do." So, I got it right away. But anyway, I thought you guys did a terrific job, and it was really a pleasure for me to participate with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate the Mayor's Youth Council as well. It was a pleasure when I was mayor, serving with many of you who were here when I was mayor. And as many of you have probably heard me say, I really got my start as a youth commissioner in Los Angeles County a long time ago, and here I am. And as I get closer to maybe being an assemblyman, the more I think being a youth commissioner was a better job. But in any event, congratulations to all of you for the great work that you do on behalf of the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, notice to the public, please.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Councilwoman Gardner.
This Thursday, June 12th, the Coastal Tidylands Water Quality Committee will be meeting at 3:00 in the Newport Coast Room, which is in Bay E. And then at 5:00 on the same afternoon, the Arts Commission will be meeting, and it's going to be meeting in council chambers for the first time. So, that's at 5:00. And then, as far as what I would like on an agenda, we got something from the Planning Commission on vehicle lifts, and I feel that's something that the council should address. So, I will ask the city manager to go through our usual routine of putting it on the next agenda, to see if enough people want it on the agenda to be formally addressed.
Thank you. Councilman Petros.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. A couple of announcements. On the Wednesday, the 28th, we had a very productive meeting, myself and members of staff, with President Yelsey and Superintendent Navarro, to discuss, in fact, traffic and parking issues around the high schools at Cronedomar and at Newport Harbor. And one of the things that I came away with was a sense of willingness, on behalf of the school district, to continue that dialogue. So, I think it's really important that I acknowledge Board Chair Yelsey for her good works and the spirit of cooperation, and to let the public know that there will be a continued dialogue, one that hasn't really been as forthcoming in the past, but really looks to be fruitful as we go into the future, to address some of the issues in that community. It was a very, very busy week. I'm sure that the mayor will speak on the Balboa Island Parade, but I would just like to thank Mr. Bob Baker, who was the driver of an absolutely stunning 1955 Thunderbird that my wife and I got to ride in. Between that car and my wife, I was the outsider in that whole thing. They were too good-looking. And that evening, we had the Newport Harbor High School Jazz Concert. Wonderful opportunity to kick off the summer, listening to the young people in our community provide just a great environment for jazz and for just celebration. And I was joined by Councilman Curry. We had a great time. And then finally, the Cronedomar 5K. While I seem to have been beat by Council Member Selich, I wonder if he actually ran in the thing, but I did participate.
You got to the starting line first.
You did get to the starting line first. But just, you know, whether it is jazz, whether it is a parade, or a sporting event, there is so much to do in Newport Beach. And I am just ever so grateful to be a resident and to be part of this community. So, want to thank you.
Councilman Selich.
Yes. Turn my microphone on. I also got to go to the Balboa Island Parade. I just want to congratulate the people on Balboa Island that worked so hard to put this on. It's a terrific event that we have every year, and it takes a lot of man-hours and a lot of hard work to do all the coordination to put it together. I also got to ride in a, what I consider a spectacular car. It was my own car that I pulled out of storage after 10 years, 1937 MG, with my wife and my granddaughter, and it was just a terrific day. Then last week, along with Councilman Curry, I got to go to Ensign Intermediate School to present Character Awards to the students over there. And as we just saw with the students who were up here before us a few minutes ago, we've got a lot of high-quality youth in our city, and when you see some of these kids, you really know that the future is in good hands. Also, on Saturday, I got to go to the 5K, and I did run in the race, and I did beat Councilman Curry, but I shot the starting gun off before I did all that. And he wonders how it happens, and I'll explain it to you later. Anyway, that's a terrific community event also, just another one of the great things we do here. And on Saturday afternoon, I got to go to the Balboa Yacht Club for the first annual Wooden Boat Show. We hope it's the first annual. I guess that's an oxymoron, first annual, but the first of many boat shows to come for wooden boats. They had, I think, close to 50 wooden boats of old and new vintage, just some spectacular examples. I was attending in place of Mayor Hill, and got to present the mayor's award to a boat in our harbor called Colnett. And just to show you that I know what I was doing, we also won the People's Choice Award, too. So, I am a man of the people, or the people are with me. I'm not sure which, but we all agreed on what was the best boat in the show. And, oh, one thing I want to mention is, just to the council, is that the FHAWA has certified Tustin Avenue now is not being on their map. So, that process went really fast. And then tomorrow, Speak Up Newport is having their monthly meeting here in the community room, right across the way here. They're going to have a presentation by Rick Stein, the executive director of the Arts Orange County, on our sculpture program that's going in the park this fall. It's the Newport Beach Civic Center Sculpture Exhibition. There's 10 sculptures that are going to be exhibited, and he's going to be giving a presentation on that. And that's at, let's see, the reception starts at 5:30 to 6:00, and then the program is from 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. So, bring your friends and neighbors, and guests are always welcome, and it's right here in the Civic Center.
All right. Councilwoman Daigle.
Many of us have many wonderful memories of the Balboa Island Parade. I attended, participated, and Sunday also, and this parade created more memories for us. So, I wanted to thank the volunteers. And among my impressions were the classic and vintage cars in the parade. They had everything from a '54 Packard, '57 Bel Air, '59 Edsel, Corvettes. I was in a Ford Mustang, classic American car. As far as volunteers, over approximately 90 volunteers, wide range of responsibilities, from chalking bayside for the parade line, up to encouraging parade participation, arranging for bands, posting signs, PR, and so on. Veterans, I was really struck by the veterans that were in the parade, particularly as we approached an anniversary of Normandy. Military personnel of every conflict, from Pearl Harbor to present day, took part in the parade. There's two survivors from Pearl Harbor, as well as other World War II survivors. Number of flags, there's just flags everywhere. Down Marine Avenue, and hundreds were handed out by the committee and participants as well. Newport Harbor Republican woman had flag pins on ribbons available for people. Flavor of entries, everything from hip-hop dancers to scouts, to dogs, dogs, and more dogs. And a lot of unique entries from some, particularly from the schools, lots of bands, school bands. And then this year, the grand marshal was Barry McGuire, and he represents much that is special about Balboa Island. He's the most generous supporter of all things island and many Newport causes and issues. His family's own property on Balboa for 70 years, and he and his wife Karen recently refurbished a home his grandparents lived in on Emerald. So, it's a 21st annual parade. I'll never forget it. Last parade as a council member, and enjoyed it tremendously, and added to all of our memories of the Balboa Island Parade. So, thank you.
Councilman Hen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll have a meeting of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee tomorrow at Explore Ocean down in Balboa Village. There'll be two agenda items, one to put the finishing touches on an enhanced maintenance program for the village, and second, to have a roundtable discussion on the design guidelines, which would also include streetscape and wayfinding improvements. I'm trusting council will approve the consultant that will help us with this project on tonight's agenda, and that consultant will be there for the presentation tomorrow. So, come on down if you have any interest in Balboa Village and its revitalization. I, too, would like to thank the volunteers for the Balboa Village, or the Balboa Island Parade, I should say. It always amazes me how many people actually come out to watch that parade, and it was really quite a crowd, so, a lot of fun. And then to congratulate Councilmember Curry for his win in the primary for the 74th Assembly District. Congratulations. And we look forward to another victory in November.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hen, for those very kind words. While I was in the parade, too, I rode in a '49 Packard, for the record, and it was a beautiful car on a great day. And like Mayor Protem Selich, I, in addition to Ensign, had the opportunity to also participate in the Character Awards at Cronedomar Middle School. And just to make the point that's been made already a couple of times tonight, we have some truly exceptional students in our schools and here in our community. And going to these awards really gives you the opportunity to appreciate all that they do, and how much our students really make this a better and a special community that it is. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. The Fourth of July, which is just over three weeks away, the city has already been working on the holiday public safety aspects and community events for West Newport Beach, excuse me, in the Balboa Peninsula for months already at this point in time. Newport Beach Police and Recreation Staff will host a community meeting next Wednesday, the 18th of June, at 4:00 p.m. It's next Wednesday, the 18th of June, at 4:00 p.m., to update the residents on the city's plans during the Fourth. The meeting will be held at our former city council chambers at 3300 Newport Boulevard. And if you are interested in the Fourth of July and Newport Beach, you should plan on attending to receive that particular update. We have also the announcement of an award that the city has, I guess you would call it an award, has received. The city of Newport Beach's Building Division has received the highest rating possible from the Insurance Services Offices, the ISO, under its Building Code Effectiveness Program. And on a scale of 1 to 10, with one being the best, the ISO has rated the city as a Class 1 for residential, commercial, and industrial properties. The ISO considers a Class 1 grade as an exemplary commitment by an agency to building code enforcement. So, why is this important? The ISO is an insurance-supported organization with the primary vision of providing advisory insurance underwriting and rating information to insurers. The ISO's Building Code Effectiveness Grading Program evaluates the effectiveness of local building code enforcement to help determine how well a community's homes and commercial structures will hold up to natural disasters such as earthquakes. And the insurers often use the building code evaluations when assessing risk and determining homeowner and commercial property premiums. So, congratulations to our building department for receiving a rating that very, very few agencies receive. I also had the opportunity of being in the Balboa Island Parade. I would say Balboa Island really has its A-game going. They had the greatest art walk this year. They had the greatest parade. I think the largest crowds that they've ever had. And the island really knows how to host the public, and I say congratulations to them. It's too bad they didn't deserve a better councilman. Oh, that's you, isn't it? Sorry, sorry. First-class operation and a great, great day. I had the opportunity of riding with my wife and my 10-week-old grandson in the parade, because we were, had the joy of babysitting all weekend long, so Charlie was either going to be home by himself or be in the parade. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce's Athletic Awards Program that they hold annually, where they award certificates of accomplishment to the top athletes in Newport Harbor High School, Cronedomar, and Sage. And once again, just an amazing gathering of young people. The amazing thing, the most amazing to me, is that when you go to the, which happened about two months ago, the academic awards, and you hear the GPA levels that they achieve today, and then you go to the athletic awards, and you hear those same GPA levels that the athletes, the top athletes, achieve today, and you hear that, you know, they're going to Duke, and Harvard, and Stanford, and these types of institutions. We are, we do have a good future in front of us. So, with that-
Mr. Mayor, you talked about the art walk, and I believe it's this Saturday, from 1:00 to 6:00, that we're having the Newport Beach Art Show right here at the community center. So, it'll be fun to come out and look at all the local artists, and I guess it's from, well, from around Orange County and Southern California. You know, a great opportunity to see and even purchase some wonderful works of art this Saturday.
Excellent. Thank you for that. We'll move on to public comments on the consent calendar.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar, items 1 through 13, for discussion. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilwoman Daigle, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar?
I have none.
Councilman Hen.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any to pull, but I did want to comment on two of the items very briefly. The July 4th security arrangements that are on the calendar, the approval that supports that. This is the first time in four years that we will have 4th of July on a weekend. This is on a Friday. We've made tremendous progress re-culturizing, if that's the way to say it, the revelry on the peninsula, and haven't totally succeeded with that. But it is now, by far and away, much more of a family-friendly event, thanks to how the police have handled this, as well as our staff, especially our Parks and Recreation Staff, in supporting all of this. And so, I'm really pleased. And I'll be in the dunk tank again this year. I don't know, is the city manager going to join me? City manager's going to join me. Very good. He looks a lot better in his swimming suit than I do. But in any event, in addition to that, item number 10 on the agenda, the Balboa Village Design Guidelines, that'll be a capping item, I think, on the work of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, and really preparing now for final recommendations for the whole, for the whole program to come to council a little bit later this year. My thanks to the committee members for a lot of hard work, and to staff for outstanding support for this process.
Councilman Hen, do you have any recusal you would like to do on item number 12 on the consent calendar? Such as item number 6, Newport Building Traffic Signal, such as item number 8, Old Newport Boulevard and West Coast Highway Modification?
Yes.
Thank you. Six and eight. And, I'm sorry, six and seven. And eight.
I'd like to recuse myself from items 6, 7, and 8 on the consent-
Within item 12 on the consent calendar.
Item number 12, yes.
Just for the audience's edification, so this is a, we're replying for Measure M funds, and some of the projects come close to a property interest with Mr. Hen. Oh, item 6.
And the reason for those is based on is real property interests, as well as business interest.
Councilman Curry.
No items to pull, but I would, first of all, thank the staff for the work that they've done on the Big Canyon Reservoir Maintenance Yard Project and screening that project from the neighbors at Canyon Crest. I know that's very much appreciated by the neighbors, and, and I appreciate staff's responsiveness to that.
Councilwoman Gardner.
Just to note that on item five, make that clarification.
Thank you.
And that I recuse myself on, from item number 12, because something might be close to my house.
Nothing to pull, but I do want to make the public aware that on item seven, these trash interceptors and debris interceptors are critical elements to the water quality in the bay and in the coast. And it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't make you aware of the fact that the city, in this $1.4 million effort, has leveraged only 25% of the city's money to gain 75% of the funds from the Orange County Transportation Authority. So if you've ever wanted, wanted to know where the city is in terms of leveraging our funds and getting competitive monies for critical elements to our infrastructure and the quality of our bay, this is one of those. Mr. Webb, congratulations. This is really good news.
Councilman Selish.
I have none, but all these recusals are making my job more difficult.
And I have none to pull, but I need to recuse myself on item number 12 on both Section 6, Newport Building Traffic Signal Synchronization, and Section 12, Turf Replacement and Irrigation Retrofits, as I own property within 500 feet of those items. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment on the consent calendar items 1 through 12, 13? Thank you.
Evening, council. Good evening, staff. My name is Gloria Hickman. I'm Vice President of the Board of Directors for Canyon Crest Estates Homeowners Association. We're a proud and beautiful community of 42 condominiums located on Pacific View, and sometimes referred to by realtors as the hidden jewel of Corona del Mar. Yet, we are not hidden from view from the city's auxiliary maintenance yard next door, which is slated for enlargement and on your calendar tonight. Our concern, of course, is that enlarging the buildings on that property will make it look more industrial and perhaps bring down our property values and degrade our quality of life because it's just going to look not very pretty. I gave you a handout, which you have in front of you. It's a three-page one, and attached to that are some photographs that show the property line between Canyon Crest Estates and the city yard. I'm not here tonight to tell you that our homeowners disapprove of the plan to enlarge it, but I do urge the council to support adequate funding for enhanced landscaping and perhaps improved fencing that will screen our view. And if you're looking at those two photos, they are probably the, the most impacted from our, from our side. The chain link fence, you can see that is the western perimeter fence of the city yard. And we have a direct view from many of our condominiums in the back onto that property. And you can see it's a little sketchy, and we're hoping that the funds that you're going to be improving tonight in item number eight will enhance what is already needy. We've been working with the excellent Fong Se and George Murdock to revise the city's initial plan so that Canyon Crest got more attention. And we made a presentation at the zoning committee on May 15th, and their recommendation, part of it is copied on page one of the same handout, if I can call your attention to that. Their recommendation supports our request. The underlining and highlighting is mine, but it specifically noted that, quote, "Prior to the issuance of building permits, the landscape plan shall be revised to include additional landscape to screen the storage buildings from Canyon Crest complex property." And so our HOA would just urge the council to include that money into the plan you're approving tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let me ask staff, is this zoning committee recommendation included in the, in the recommendation before tonight?
As I understand it, these recommendations have been included. The plans you see tonight, and we have a copy with you, have substantial landscaping now included. We had a certain level, and we've added a lot more to that at the request of the homeowners.
Right, so it'll reflect this direction from the zoning committee?
I believe it does.
Okay.
We'll follow it closely too with you to make sure that it meets your needs. We really appreciate your working with us on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to comment on items 1 through 13?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. As you know, I submitted written comments on several of the consent calendar items the clerk has kindly made available in the lobby. One of them I missed is the item 10 that Councilmember Hen just mentioned, which is allocation of $150,000 for yet another consultant to develop ideas for improving Balboa Village. I have two comments about that that I intended to make. One, as it seems to me, over the last 10 or 20 years, the city's taxpayers have invested a great deal of money in Balboa Village with very little result to date. And I'm wondering if we have anywhere a kind of a running total of how much we have contributed. I know that we have spent millions for parking lots, for tree removals, and have a commitment for perhaps another $2 million through the Balboa Theater. I would wonder what the total has been over the last 10 or 20 years. And I would wonder if just kind of treating the village as an organic entity on its own, it might find its own destiny without our help, as other areas of the city have. Second comment about this is this a great illustration of the difficulty being budget night tonight that the members of the public have determining exactly what it is you are approving when you approve a budget. The staff report for this item says that the $150,000 was approved by you in a budget amendment, which it was indeed on February 25th, but the $150,000 was added to a, an account within the Community Development Department. This is called Account 8080 Professional Services. It already had money in it, and the residents have no idea what the money that was already in it was in, or why you needed more money for this particular consultant, or how that money had been approved. So looking through all the budget documents that we have, if you look for Balboa or Balboa Village, you'll find, only thing you'll find is another $200,000 for what I think is a kind of a useless archway that's gonna go over Balboa Boulevard. And we have the same problem here. Tonight, you will be approving in that Community Development Account 8080, $325 of consulting fees for the next year, but I have no idea in that account or any other account where you have money allocated for the Balboa Village Revitalization Effort, or what that $325 of consulting money is intended for. And it's kind of a pervasive problem because everything gets lumped together in the budget. And you may know, I'm sure somebody on the city's staff knows what those budgets are to cover, but the public really does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience, from the public, like to comment on items number 1 through 13 on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. It'll be appropriate for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar items 1 through 13, noting a recusal on item number 12 by Councilwoman Gardner. Recusal by Mayor Hill on item 12, Parts 6 and 12. And Councilman Hen, item 12, Parts 6, 7, and 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we move in seconded. Any further comment? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Your name from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
In my rush and council, my name is Tom Wilson from Corona del Mar. It just occurred to me a few minutes ago, the last time I was here was to express some apprehension over the planned trash collection. I must say, that's gone very well from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
New issue. My house is very close to this facility, the closest there is. That gives me a problem. The problem is the concerts on the park, on the green, so-called, that are actually performed on a raised concrete stand outside the library, which is the very closest point to my house and closer to any other house. Why does it give me a problem? I like music. I don't hear music. I hear the detritus of amplification, a wump, 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 casual staccato voice. The mix is very bad. It's not pleasant, and there's no escaping it. Now, there are four more of these scheduled, all on a Sunday. They start at 6 till 7:30, supposedly, but don't believe it. They start at 3:30, when the preparations, rehearsals begin. Such four solid hours are for me disturbance on a Sunday. Now, I've written to you about this and I'm repeating myself. Your response has basically been, get over it. It's here to stay. And by the way, a lot of people really enjoy the performances. Of course, they wouldn't come if they didn't, would they? I'm sure if you put a circus here, they'd come and enjoy it. So, there's another thing too, they can pick and choose which they come to, between zero and non, or any number, or 10, or all of them, or any number in between, and I have no choice. I have to endure all of them. Now, I'm pretty well stuck. I can see that. I don't see anything moving, but it wouldn't come here unless I had a suggestion to make that I think could solve my problem and not cause one for anybody else. If you installed unidimensional speakers that projected the sound out to the audience that wants to hear it, and not to the poor people like me who don't, that seems to me to be a very good solution. I beg you to consider it, and thanks for your attention.
Thank you for coming to share that. Is anybody else in the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser, and I had two non-agenda comments. First one, actually, I was thinking to make at the study session, but you seemed pressed for time. The councils and the city staff there spent considerable time on floating docks in the harbor, which we understood was one of the mayor's initiatives for this year. And I understand that the, all, or perhaps at least the majority of you, supported that initiative and endorsed it, but the comment I wanted to make is we seem to have developed a mindset in the last several years that each year we get a new mayor, and the mayor in his state-of-the-city message announces initiatives for the city, and those somehow automatically become initiatives for city staff and everybody on the council. And what I wanted to say about that is there was no publicity I'm aware of in, in the media, but this last Sunday, June 8th, was the exact 60th anniversary of the voters of Newport Beach voting to adopt a city charter and with it, our own unique form of local government that defines the roles of the city council and the city staff. And I looked through it this afternoon, and although we have the idea that each new mayor gets three wishes, I couldn't find that in the city charter, that the mayor gets three wishes. So I just wanted to say that. Second comment is, again, this being budget night, somewhere in the budget, and again, I'm not sure where, I believe you will be approving an allocation of $80,000 to $100,000 for the two self-styled merchants associations that have emerged, one in Balboa Village again, the other on Balboa Island. And I wanted to remind you that the $40,000 to $50,000, the $40,000 that they both got last year was given to them by a contract, and the contract required a report back to you at your first meeting in June, which is tonight, of the activities that they'd engaged in during the last year, so you would understand how your last allocation had been spent, and the budget, how they're expecting to spend the money in the coming year. You may quite possibly have gotten those reports. The public has not seen those, and I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, then we'll go to oral reports by council members, and this time, we'll start with Councilwoman Diggle.
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilman Hen. Yes, one committee meeting, the Tytland's Management Committee that met on May 29th in the community room next door, and the sole item of business was to further consider the draft seawall policy that staff and the committee have been working on now for several months. And I think we're finally beginning to get things narrowed down here and provide enough guidance for staff to really move that project forward, including a direction to do more community outreach, especially with the Balboa Island residents. And so I think that project is moving along well. It certainly is of large importance, not only to the residents of Balboa Island, but to the city as a whole in view of the potential cost. Thank you. Councilman Curry.
No items.
Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
Councilman Petros.
No items.
Councilman Selish.
I had something I wrote down, but I can't find it. The, the general plan, or not general plan, the Local Coastal Plan Committee met since our last council meeting, and we had a pretty vigorous discussion on what parts of the harbor code to include in the local coastal plan regulations, and we requested that the staff do more work on that. We really want to emphasize only those items that actually need to go to the Coastal Commission to be part of our regulatory plan in the coastal zone. And then on the 25th of this month, the committee will be meeting again at 12:30 in the Newport Coast Room, and we'll pick up other items, and I'm not sure exactly what they are, because I lost my notes, but I'm sure they're important for the local coastal plan, and that's on the 25th to 12:30 in the Newport Coast Room.
And I have one brief thing to comment on. The Newport Beach and Company, amongst its umbrella activities, created a foundation that put on its first educational program these last several weeks. I'm sorry, I don't know the name of that educational program, if it has a name.
I don't think it has a name.
Okay. I'm not as bad as I thought. And I got some feedback on it this week, and the feedback was extremely positive. Some individuals that had attended, they said that, that the educational process, the reports, the activities, the functionality that they received education on by various staff members, by all staff members, was excellent. And the one that amused me the most, I guess, is their remarking about Dave Webb. They said that, that he was so passionate of his work that they could listen to him read the phone book. So I think that that's quite a compliment, and that all of the staff members that participated in that, on behalf of the council and on behalf of Newport Beach and Company, I'd like to thank you for your efforts. It was very well received. With that, we will move on to our public hearings. Item number 14, Planning Commission Appeal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill. Members of the city council, I'm Kim Brant, your Community Development Director. This public hearing is an appeal of the Planning Commission's finding of substantial conformance for the Echo Beach Project, which was formerly known as Seashore Village, and it's located on the, at 5515 River Avenue. Senior Planner Jaime Murillo is here to give an overview and presentation of the project, and I do believe that the appellant is here this evening to address the council as well. And with that, I'll turn it to Jaime.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'd just like to provide a little bit of background regarding the project. As Kim mentioned, the project's formerly known as Seashore Village, which consisted of the demolition of a 54-unit apartment building and redevelopment of the site with 24 residential condominium units. The project was approved by the city council on appeal in June of 2008, and subsequently approved by the California Coastal approved by the California Coastal Commission in October of 2008. Although some time ago, the project approvals are still valid pursuant to state law in the Subdivision Map Act, there's been a number of automatic extensions that have been granted to partial, or, sorry, subdivision maps, and therefore the approval, or the life of the permit is valid until October of 2016. The owner and developer at the time never completed the project and has since sold the project and the, or the property to the current applicant and property owner who desires to construct the project. However, they have requested a number of modifications to the approved project, primarily consisting of reconfiguring the site plan, eliminating the duplex product type from the site plan configuration, and revising the architectural style, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail. The project's located at 55 15 River Avenue in West Newport, adjacent to the West Newport Park. It's located between River Avenue and Seashore Drive. As you can see on this exhibit, the property is designated for multi-unit residential development, which allows for both single unit and multi-unit attached and detached product types. Surrounding land uses consist of a single unit and two-unit dwellings. Here's some site photographs of what the apartment currently looks like. The photo in the lower right-hand corner is a view of the site looking down the Neptune Avenue dead end. This exhibit is the approved site plan. As you can see, the configuration consisted of 12 single-unit dwellings facing Seashore Drive and the West Newport Park, and facing River Avenue was six duplex units. Vehicular circulation and access to each of the units was provided via private driveway connecting Neptune Avenue and River Avenue, with the exception of one unit in the northern, northerly, westerly, westerly corner of the site, which had its own curb cut access to River Avenue and private driveway. With regard to parking, a total of 15 guest spaces were provided on-site, which exceeded the 12, which is the minimum number required by the zoning code. In terms of pedestrian connectivity, an ADA pathway was provided between River Avenue and Seashore Drive. This is an exhibit of the proposed modified site plan. As you can see, generally, the site plan is similar, particularly along Seashore Drive with the single-unit dwellings facing Seashore Drive and along the edge of the park. However, the major changes occur along River Avenue, where the duplex product types have been eliminated and replaced with single-unit dwellings clustered around a common motor courts, illustrated in pink. However, vehicular circulation remains the same through a private driveway connecting River Avenue and Neptune Avenue. Total 14 guest spaces are provided on-site. It is one less than the previously approved project. However, it's important to note that this site plan eliminates the extra curb cut on River Avenue and thereby gaining an additional on-street parking space. And with regards to pedestrian connectivity, this site plan provides two paths connecting River Avenue to Seashore Drive, one ADA accessible path along the edge of the park, and one through the center of the development through enhanced pisados. This exhibit illustrates the architecture that was approved as part of the original design, consists of three alternating plan types with the exterior finished in either craftsman or plantation architectural finishes with the use of buttonboard siding and plantation shutters. However, the applicant is proposing to modify the architectural style to more of a contemporary modern style with the use of stucco and wood siding, also the enhanced use of stone accents and additional metal and glassworks. This is enhanced rendering of the proposed architecture. In terms of project approvals, there's a total of four entitlements that were approved. The first was a tentative tract map, which allowed for the sale of 24 airspace condominium units. It's important to note that the tract map did not create new individual lots or roadways. The existing parcel remains the same, solely for condominium purposes. The required easements, public improvements and conditions continue to remain applicable. A modification permit was approved authorizing the development to encroach into the front and side setbacks and setbacks adjacent to the street. And this allowed for that site configuration, which was more compatible with the setbacks and building separation that's more common in the neighborhood. And the approved site, or the modified site plan continues to maintain those minimum setbacks previously approved. Use permit was approved authorizing the midpoints of the duplex units to exceed the maximum midpoint height limit. However, those duplex units, as I mentioned, have been removed from the plan, and the design of the new, or the structures now comply fully with the current height limits established under the zoning code, and therefore the use permit is no longer applicable. And lastly, a coastal residential development permit was approved, requiring the replacement of six affordable housing units within the coastal zone. This continues to be a requirement, and the applicant is fully committed to providing those units. With regard to the required environmental review, the environmental impacts of the project were analyzed under a previously adopted mitigation, or mitigated negative Under the CEQA guidelines, minor changes or additions to a project are allowed without a new environmental document, provided that there's no new or substantially greater impacts identified. And therefore, staff, with the help of our environmental consultant, Placeworks, prepared an addendum to evaluate those potential differences in the approved project and the proposed modifications, and which conclusion found that the impacts would be similar and that the conclusions of the mitigated negative declaration do not change, and no new mitigation measures are required. The Planning Commission reviewed the applicant's request at the April 3, 2014 meeting. They're generally supportive of the project and felt that the project changes were positive. They unanimously found that the project to be in substantial conformance with the approved project, and that the required findings pursuant to municipal code could be made to support those changes to the previously approved project. Subsequent to that, the appellant, who was an adjacent property owner, has filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. In support of her appeal, she provided a 10-page comment letter in addition to the six-page comment letter submitted previously to the Planning Commission. Her major points are that she believes the revisions shouldn't be approved as revisions to the approved project, but should be reviewed as a new project requiring new entitlement permits, that the director's deferral of the substantial conformance review to the Planning Commission was an error, and since she believes that the project should be considered a new project, that the CEQA analysis is invalid. Staff has provided detailed responses to each of her comments, which has been included in your staff report for consideration. She was recently, or this afternoon, provided an additional comment letter further providing facts in support of her position. Staff has reviewed her additional comments, and we believe that the responses that we previously provided at council continue to address her comments, and staff continues to recommend that the city council uphold the Planning Commission's decision. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. We also have our consultant from Placeworks available to answer any questions related to the environmental review or the appropriateness of the addendum that was prepared.
All right. Thank you.
I have another question. Oh, you don't want us to have questions?
Well, I wanted to ask if you wanted to have questions. I'm going to ask the appellant as the applicant here, if they would like to make a statement, and then have the developer make a statement and allow you to ask questions.
And then they will be able to come back up? Okay.
All right. So, I believe the appellant is here, we have heard. Yes, if you'd like, would you like to make a statement or a comment?
Can you hear me okay? First of all, I wanted to correct some of the things that Jaime had said just now. He stated that the project was not going to create additional lots. It did in fact create six additional lots. To be very specific, the Seashore Village project had 12 single-family residences and six duplexes, totaling 24 units, but it was 18 buildings. They've changed it and added six buildings, so now it is 24 single-family residential units on 24 lots. So, if you look at almost anything, if you look at other cities that actually have a procedure for substantial conformance, adding buildings, changing lot sites would knock it out of substantial conformance in a skinny minute. I can provide you the procedure that the city of San Diego, Encinitas, Del Mar, any of those different cities, this would never fly. The other thing I wanted to state, regarding the pro forma that was done in 2007, it was a rental survey that was done on, you know, the tenants in Las Briesas, and there's no way that you can have a pro forma, which is based on the developers' financial gains and what they can afford to develop, how much they can afford to, you know, pay and still make a profit, and that's part of the pro forma. And I actually contacted some people that have done that, and they said, "There's no way that something from 2007 would be relevant today, not with the economy tanking and, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense." So, that permit in itself would be dated, but I also wanted to have you, if anybody's an attorney that can look, I have triple-checked this. The entitlements, the local entitlements, the discretionary entitlements, the modified permit, the use permit, the residential coastal development permit that were issued as discretionary permits through the city, those have expired. Now, it's true, the legislature has extended the tentative tract maps automatically, don't have to reapply, don't have to do anything, and state agency-related permits would also have been automatically extended, not local entitlements. So therefore, these three modification, or the three permits that were on the public hearing, those have already expired. The exception to that is if it was a planned unit development, and planned unit developments are when you own the land underneath. These are airspace condominiums. So, that one little thing that could have extended the local ones does not apply here. I have, I've had a huge issue with them calling the opening to the project a driveway. To me, it's very bothersome because, first of all, being an owner for 35 years, buying our property 35 years ago with an ocean view, a dead end, so we had no through traffic, ours is a conforming building, now it's going to be opened up just strictly for the benefit of a developer. And I didn't think that's what Newport was about. I've looked, trust me, I've researched, different people that have tried to get minor adjustments, minor variances, and it's been very difficult for your average resident, your average Joe. When a big developer comes in, somehow the red carpet rolls out, and I'm just asking, I'm not saying, don't, you know, I don't want these guys to develop, they've got a right to develop, but they don't have a right to have privileges that you and I can't have. And nobody seemed to, I mean, I'm not revisiting 2008, I'm talking about right now. They have, these are two separate projects, and again, if somebody's an attorney and they've read the case that I've suggested, it is darn near identical. I've spoken to attorneys that are very knowledgeable on this specific case, and they say my case is on point, and there's another term called "on all fours," and it just simply means that circumstances, the parties, the relief that you sought is almost identical to this case law. Now, the case law that I'm referring to is called Save Our Neighborhood versus Lishman. It was a 2006 appellate court decision, and the gravamen of the case was basically, is this a new project or is it a change to a project? Now, this is important with CEQA because CEQA doesn't, in their guidelines, the 21166 and 151, I think it's 62 and 64, those don't address whether or not it's a new project. So basically, this lawsuit, if you read it, I've got a two-page synopsis that I didn't write, it's from an outside development company, right on the internet, makes it super easy to understand. You'll see that when it's a new project, you have to basically say, then you have to start all over. You're not, you didn't get those entitlements. These entitlements were won, fought for by the prior architect, Todd Schooler. It's his work product. It's his copyrighted architectural plans that this is all based on. So, you can't get what belongs to another architect just because you bought the land that happened to, that was going to be where it was going to be built. I don't know how long you would like me to speak. I could probably sit down and then you can call me back up, or I can keep going. Whatever you prefer.
My choice.
Do you feel like? Well, it may could have been my choice. I'm staying. Do you feel you've made your major points? I think, quite likely. Oh. I just have one clarification, what you were just going over, the, something about the architectural plans. Correct. And entitlements. Uh huh. Could you go over that a little bit more, because I'm? Sure. I mean, architectural plan is a drawing, and I'm not quite sure what it has to do with the rest of it. Well, the thing is, the, in 2007, Todd Schooler was the architect, and he got the, all the entitlements ready to go. The entitlements were as with Todd Schooler's architectural plans. Now, if this project is claiming that it's just a revision of Seashore Village, they're basically taking his work product. Okay. Now, I understand what your point was. I was quite clear. Thank you. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention quickly is that, in the Planning Commission, when they wanted to look at the building materials and, you know, the board, and they also wanted to talk about possible CCNR restrictions, they were cautioned that that wasn't before them, that basically that they would advise that no new conditions be placed on this new project. The problem with that is it gives this project a complete pass, a complete pass. So, it could be, it could be anything, and if you're just simply looking at the environmental analysis, then it flies, but they're forgetting about that it doesn't comply with our municipal code regarding the subdivision. If you want a minor change to an approved tentative tract map, there's a procedure that we do have in place. And again, the added buildings, that knocks it out right away. It can't be a minor amendment. They added buildings. So, anyway, I'll let you go with that, think about it, and if you have any other questions, I'll be happy.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to take you up on your offer. Thank you very much. And would anyone from the developer like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rush, or Mayor Hill, members of the city council. My name's Rich Nolan, I'm here representing the ownership group tonight, and I won't take a lot of time here, I'll just say a couple things, that we really appreciate the time staff has put into this, looking at these issues, including the appeal issues. There's been a lot of work they've done to understand what those issues are, and we certainly agree, and with their recommendation tonight, we agree with the recommendations from the Planning Commission to approve this project as substantial conformance. This is 24 condominium units. It has more landscaping, less pavement, it's the same development footprint, there is no new impacts whatsoever. The color of the building, the architecture has changed, the style has changed, but really no, no impacts from the original plan. We think this is definitely substantial conformance, and we would look for support in denying the appeal tonight. And I'm here with some of my colleagues, if there's any questions in detail, we can come up here and answer those as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would like a clarification.
Councilwoman Gardner.
Because I did notice, I mean, I was like, oh, good, more landscaping, but I also noticed that it's a lot less open space. So, how does that work? How do you, how do you have?
No, there's more open space.
Well, this says 675,000 from the previous one, and this says 559 for yours on the table I have, so that was confusing to me. So maybe we need to clarify that, I'm reading it wrong or something, but, I mean, because I was, so, get me that in a moment, but that was just, that was a question I had.
Okay.
Councilwoman Degel? All right. Claire?
Can you go back to the slides there where you showed, okay, Todd Schooler architecture? Okay, and you had some descriptions for that? Can you kind of go over those descriptions?
Sure. So, the intent of his designs, it was the same model that would alternate throughout the development. the development. However, to provide a little bit of, you know, difference in architecture, he chose to essentially use architectural details that were craftsman or plantation in style. And so like the plantation, as you see, the building on the left had that battened board siding and plantation shutters, I think the green trim. And then the building on the right is what he referred to as craftsman style, but it was really more of the use of, I think, decorative wood and other architectural elements.
Right. Yeah, Todd always did very nice work. You know, the facades were never cheap. They'd always look great from the street. And now, can you go on to the proposed architecture? I mean, it looks, I mean, where are the architectural details on this?
So maybe I can use this one. So it's just a different style, definitely more modern, something we're seeing a lot more now in the city, but just uses a lot more metal trim, more use of glass. And then this wood paneling, essentially for the siding of the building in conjunction with stucco. But I don't know if the project architect is in attendance tonight. He might be able to elaborate a little bit more.
Okay. And is it the city's position that, like the commission or the council, can't request more architectural details, or how does that work?
I think the council can direct or propose modifications to the design and have the applicant come back to complete their review if needed.
Okay. So if there were more architectural details added, what could be some that would be added?
Whatever the council deems necessary. Something we did ask for was for the elevations facing the street or internal driveway. We did ask for enhanced architectural elements. And actually, this, so if you look at maybe this picture in upper left-hand corner, this includes more enhancements along that side elevation, whereas the building on the center here is more plain, and that would be more of what we would allow facing another unit internally within the project. And so, I don't know if it shows on this site plan itself, but in the actual project plans, it does identify which elevations require enhanced architecture. And it's really those basically facing either river or seashore in that internal driveway.
Great. Well, I appreciate your asking for that and your demanding that. And so with the look from the street, it is an enhanced facade then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But from the previous slide of the new project, the side of the building, does that front on any of the streets? Because the side's pretty boring. There, yeah. I mean, that's pretty monolithic to me. Now, maybe that's just not a very good rendering. But is that face the street, or are they all going to be facing, having the fronts face or something like that?
Yeah, this, you know, I have to go back and look at the actual plans, and I can pull those up.
Okay. And I just wanted, for the developer, it was, I picked up those figures from Table One, handwritten page nine in the staff report or the council packet.
Further comments from the council?
That now? Okay. Added buildings. I mean, I do think there is a difference here between units and actual buildings. You've got a duplex. So we don't think, though, that adding additional buildings as opposed to, even though it's the same number of units, that that isn't a change. I mean, I see both good and bad in this. I see, I think it's nice that we have separation, but that was, I hadn't even thought about it that way. But the difference between a building and a unit, that's not considered significant?
Councilmember Gardner, when we are looking at the ability to apply the substantial conformance to the revised project, we look to the zoning code for the criteria that we needed to use for the evaluation. And so it did not speak to the number of buildings on the lot. It did not speak to, on the property, it did not speak to any reconfiguration of or the location of the buildings. It really talks about, we're looking at the sum total of the number of units, whether or not there was any additional permits that would be needed. And it does not involve, there's four different criteria, and it does not involve a feature of the project that was specifically addressed, or was a subject of conditions of approval for the project, or that was a specific consideration by the applicable review authority in the project approval. So it really, we don't have that level of detail in the zoning code to make, as a criteria for when we would not consider it in substantial conformance.
Okay. Well, as somebody who's not an architect, who's not a builder, who's not an engineer, I looked at this, and I looked at it from an environmental point of view. I mean, okay, is this increasing traffic? No, because it's the same number of units, so you're going to have basically probably the same number of people. If there is more landscaping, if there's permeable, if it's got better water management plans, hey, I'm all for that. So I thought there was a lot to be said for it, but I did, was concerned about all the arguments that were brought up in terms of our, of the city's approval process. And I want to be sure that we're very comfortable in that and that we're comfortable with that lawsuit, the People versus Lishman and that sort of thing, as to where there are discrepancies, why it isn't the same thing, and just as the appellant seems to feel, that it's just a duplicate and that we are doomed.
Yeah. And we took a pretty good look at whether or not an addendum was the appropriate document here or not, and looked at the concerns she raised in the Lishman case. And I think overall, it's our position that these are relatively minor changes from a SEQA standpoint. The Lishman case, she cites basically added mitigation measures dealt with wetlands, stream realignment. The project was significantly different than what was originally approved. It really truly was a new project in that Lishman case. And that's just not the situation that's before you this evening. So we feel comfortable that the addendum's the appropriate document.
I would like to make comment. I kind of look at this by going back to, one of my first involvements in Newport Beach was West Newport Beach, and looking at that as the war zone issue that we had and making findings that we felt would improve that area. And one of the findings that was made was that there was, there was not enough owner-occupied residents in that area. And as a result, we actually worked and changed some of the codes to allow for the separation of duplexes legally to be able to be sold individually, halves, and anything and everything we could think of to actually, quite frankly, eliminate rentals and create more of a family residential area. This is a project that's taking 54 rental units and converting that to 24 owner-occupied units that are family suitable, and adding an affordable element to it so that we're actually even accomplishing some of our affordable requirements as well. I see nothing but positive aspects and improvement of real estate values on the peninsula as a result of this project. And so, and I guess by my thinking, the basic configuration is there, just as was originally approved. The fact that we're taking some units from duplexes and converting them to single-family is what we've been trying to do down in that area for 20 years. And so, you know, I'm quite frankly, very supportive of the project.
I did have a question. The issue was brought up, this would never fly in another jurisdiction, but my understanding is we have to apply the zoning code for Newport Beach to the decisions that are made in Newport Beach, not San Diego or Los Angeles or someplace else.
That is correct. Each jurisdiction has the authority to establish their own criteria for, within their zoning code, for evaluating changes to a project. So we look to the City of Newport Beach's zoning code for guidance and direction, very specific direction as to what we use as criteria.
So I'm wholly unimpressed by an argument about some other city and what they would do. And I took your comments, Aaron, to the effect that you feel confident that there is a solid, that we're on solid legal ground, that this is a substantial conformance with the prior permit. I like the revised project better too, but that's really not the issue here. The issue is, is it in substantial conformance? And in accordance with what was in the staff report and what I can see for myself, I think it's pretty clear that it is. So I have no difficulty with this.
Further comments by council before I open it up to the public?
Mayor Hill? The question of the buildings, the tentative map that's been approved is going to be used to construct that project, correct?
That is correct. It's an airspace map, which doesn't, which the...
Exactly.
The division of ownership is in the air. It's a complicated term, but there is no, there's only one parcel involved.
So the notion that buildings have an effect on what the description of the project or how the project will be built really is moot.
That is correct.
I have gone through the more than 100-page staff report that you have prepared, and one, I would like to compliment you on your thoroughness here. I read the addendum that Placeworks put together and appreciated the comparatives in each one of the topical areas that looked at this project compared to the previous project, and used the SEQA guidelines to determine whether or not a supplemental EIR or the addendum was appropriate. And I come to the very same conclusions that Placeworks done. This was a thorough investigation that rendered a decision that there is substantial conformance, and I too would find in favor of this project.
Any no further comments from the council? Like to open it up to the public? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Yes, please. Come on down.
Mike Johnson. I live at 5803 Seashore Drive. I've lived in West Newport for over 50 years. I lived there before the apartments were built. I did not like the looks of the apartments then. I don't like the looks of them now. I am really pleased with this revised, very comfortable with our environment, our type of eclectic architecture that's there. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition. What I particularly like, because I'm an old insurance man, is that they are providing elevators for this three-story property. I have provided an elevator in my three-story house. They have sprinkler systems throughout, which I am very pleased with, particularly because they had a fire where one in the existing apartments where a car caught fire in one of the indentations for cars. And that's not going to be a problem. They provided a lot of adequate guest space. But generally speaking, I think it's going to be a vast improvement to our West Newport Harbor, our properties. The, Rich Nolan was nice enough to come to our West Newport Beach Association and tell us what their plans were, and there was a great reception to it, although I can't speak for the West Newport Beach Association because we didn't take a formal act on it. But there was a gentle warm reception. We really appreciated the time that he took to bring us into what the plans were. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Others that would like to speak? Come on down, please.
My name is George Schroeder, and along with the appellant, my family owns a duplex on the corner of 53rd Street and Neptune. So along with her, I guess I do have concerns about Neptune being opened up in traffic. When I helped them find that location and buy it about 11 years ago, one of the things that attracted me to the building was it was on a fairly quiet street, almost a cul-de-sac, because Neptune doesn't go through. I knew Todd Schooler. I think he was a great, he was a great architect. He was a very good man. Sadly, he died in his 50s of a heart attack. I did talk to him about the project when he was doing it back then. I thought his project was good. Todd's project was on one lot. It's currently on one lot now. The new project is on one lot. Todd's project had what would end up being 24 homes. It's called 18 buildings, but I think, as Nancy knows, there's a lot of duplex buildings in Corona Del Mar. They were built as duplexes, but then they legally have two separate owners of each app because they've been converted to condominiums. They have separate legal descriptions and separate legal tax bills. So Todd's project was 24 residents. The new project is 24. If the new project has a bit less open space, I'm going to say that's a better thing because when a family lives in a home, they would prefer to have, it be a detached home and not have a common wall or live above somebody. So anyways, so I'm not the typical person who says, what's in the best interest of me? What do I personally want? I look at, what's the greater good? What's, you know, fair and what's reasonable? It's good for all of us. If we take a 54-unit apartment building that has served its time and to convert to 24 ownerships that may be owner-occupied, that may be leased out, but at the end of the day, there'll be one family in each home, and if there's more traffic in front of my family's home, well, that's just a trade-off that I have to accept. So I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, city attorney, city manager, former mayor's. My name's Bob DiCarlo. I've been a city resident for over 35 years, and I have a piece of property that's next to it. And what I'd like to do is give you a little more background as to why you can't possibly consider this the same. And what I'll do is I'll go back to what was some of the original conditions, the conditions for this original approval that got all these exceptions, okay? And here's, I'll read it exactly the way it's stated on the permit. With the exception of the height modifications required per condition number seven, the floor plans and the building envelopes for each unit are approved as precise plans. They're approved as precise plans. That means you can't change them. And the council that approved that project at that time, in their wisdom, added, and future floor area additions to the building envelope should be prohibited. Prohibited. You cannot change anything. The proposed open patio and deck area for each unit shall not be permitted to be enclosed, and the landscape and open area proposed throughout the development should be preserved. Okay? The resolution passed by this council in 2008 included these promises, conditions and findings. If the city doesn't uphold these conditions of the prior project, but allows the new project to claim it as the same project, it'd be equivalent to breaking a contract with the people. If Echo Beach doesn't want to be bound by the 2008 settlement or be bound by the conditions calling out very specific architectural styles, it didn't say that it's allowed to change it to be a modern. If you show that previous slide again, I'd like you to show the Todd Schooler drawing. Specifically in the conditions, it called out that style, plantation and the way it looks. Now go to the new one. That doesn't look a single thing like it. That's prohibited in the approval. 100% prohibited. In the second page of the resolution, it stated, whereas each unit will feature either a craftsman or plantation architectural style. Okay? You cannot consider allowing a completely different project, which this is, and it has to be, because of copyright laws. And an increase in the number of buildings because that was prohibited in the conditions of the original approval. Go and read it. It's prohibited. And to allow this to proceed is travesty.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the public that would like to comment on this project?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't want to express any opinion about the quality or benefit that the city might receive from this project, but I do feel that both the planning commission and apparently maybe now the council, in trying to achieve what they see as the better, greater good for the city, which is a great objective, is achieving that by bending not the SEQA rules, but the Newport Beach Municipal Code, which as Councilman Hen said, we should try to respect. And the code that we adopted in 2010, I realize the city attorney does not appreciate my efforts as a plain citizen and not an attorney to interpret the laws that we have, but I think the public should be able to understand the laws. Ms. Brant read the fine... Ms. Brant read the finding that you have to make, which is on page seven of the proposed resolution, or I see here a little page 270 of the overall agenda packet for tonight. There, there are two alternatives. Either this is some, a minor change that can be approved as being in substantial conformance, or the alternative to that is it needs to be processed as a new application. And the critical finding is this finding C at the top of page seven of the resolution, 270 of the agenda packet. "The changes that are proposed do not involve a feature of the project that was specifically addressed, or was the subject of condition of approval of the project," and I believe Mr. DeCaro just said that there seemed to be, "or that was a specific consideration by the applicable review authority in the project approval." And now, when this came to the planning commission, I could not review the tape of what happened at the meeting in 2008 because the city staff at that time was not thinking that we should have access to recordings older than a year old. So I don't know, but surely I would think the architecture and the site plan were considerations in granting the approval in 2008. And if those things were considered and might have affected the approval, we don't know one way or another whether better or worse, the code clearly says that it's not substantial. It's not a minor change. That, that's your condition that you have to, to make to establish that it's a minor change. It doesn't look minor to the public, and so the code seems clearly to say it should be processed as a new application. Doesn't mean it won't be approved, it's just a different process, and I think we should follow the process that the code we adopted in 2007 says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public like to comment on this item? Dean Nann, bring it back to the council. Pleasure of the council.
Just, I think you did address it in the staff report, but to clarify, some of the points that, that were brought up, that the floor plans were approved and they, since they were approved, we have to stay with those floor plans, that future additions should be prohibited, that each unit features a craftsman style or something like that. I mean, those points, as I say, I think you addressed them, but I'd like you to address them again.
Sure. I'd just like to clarify that there is no specific condition requiring either the craftsman or plantation architectural style.
Correct, okay.
However, the condition number six that I was referred to, and I did work on the project back in 2008, and the intent of that condition was trying to resolve how we can maintain this development and address future additions or modifications that these future owners might want to propose, given that it is a condominium development and it's just airspace. So to address that difficulty, we developed that condition, and the intent is that there shall be no future modifications to the final constructed product. And then that was a way to basically preserve the patios and the open space that was presented at the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, I too, as other council members have expressed, look through all the documentation and feel that it's in substantial conformance. And I know it's not, you know, the quality of the project is not before, it's this consideration, but I just can't help commenting on it that it's a better project. And even though it may have less landscaping area in it, I think it's
Supposedly has more landscaping. I just was struck by how it could have more landscaping with less open space. It was just, that seemed a contradiction.
But with that, I'll move the, the staff recommendation to uphold the planning commission's
I'll second that.
...proven resolutions. All right. We have a motion to second, and staff hands up. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify and make sure it's clear in the record that the planning approvals that are companions to the tentative tract map are active permits, that they have not expired. And there is a provision within the zoning code in its section 20.54.060A5, which addresses permits that are tied to tentative tract maps. And the permits do not, for the planning approval, do not expire until such time the tentative map expires.
Thank you. City Attorney.
And just briefly, from a procedural standpoint, we should let the appellant speak one more time, have an opportunity to address the evidence that was presented.
All right.
I also had one question, too. For the benefit of the public, do you have a photo of the existing apartments, Lido Sands, and what we're going to be looking at in the future? I know you've shown the contrast of the approved plan that never got built, but what is it saying?
The very beginning of the presentation.
Oh, it was, okay.
We don't have it on our screen. Here it comes. There you go.
It is.
Palatial.
All right. We will then offer, by city attorney, a recommendation. Would the appellant like to make three minutes' worth of wrap-up comments? The appellant?
Basically, the conditions are part of the resolution that I know Mr. Hen was aware of and Mr. Selish was aware of. In the resolution, the entire thing is a promise of conditions. On the second page, as my husband stated, it's, it calls out plantation and craftsmen. It seems like tonight that the majority of you are going to vote for this because the things that you're asking are not related to the legalities of getting this approved. You may think it's a great project, and it's better, and that's fine. Many people do, many people don't. But what you should, as a council, and you're, you have to look at the public funds that you're expending on going to litigation with me on this because the entitlements, the local entitlements have expired, the conditions have not been upheld, it's a different project. And when they quoted that there were, one of you, somebody quoted regarding, there were mitigations on the Save Our Neighborhood v. Lishman, that's not true. I gave, if you guys read it, I gave you a very quick synopsis. There's no mitigations. They had prior, a prior owner, the, the thing why that case was, was determined to be a new project, it had different owners, just like this did. Okay? That's the crux of it, and you can't use somebody else's plans and, and get the entitlements from it. My remittance is probably up.
No.
No?
You have used half of it.
Oh, I wish I would have spoken a little slower then. I don't really know where to, where to begin. It's just very frustrating here.
Yeah. You're not obligated to use it all.
Bob, would you like to finish my? Oh, just basically, if you guys look at all of the documents that I submitted, the, the one thing that's the most important is the conditions that were in the resolution of 2008. And if you look at those conditions, you're going to go, there's no way that you can change a project like this and think that it's a minor change. The other thing is it resulted in litigation, and it will result in litigation again. So I hope that you've done your homework and you can be on solid ground here. And if anybody has any reasons to recuse themselves because of possibly conflict of interest, before you vote, that might be a good idea as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that advice, Mr. DeCaro, but I'll choose to take the advice of the city attorney when we need legal advice. So, thank you.
Just a question. The Santa Barbara condominiums, didn't we have a change of ownership there? And didn't they get to go with the same?
Thank you. If I may, the entitlements that the city council authorizes run with the land, not with the property owner.
Mayor Hill, I just want to make a clarification before we vote on this, that the comments that I made were specifically to the elements of the report that were provided and what I am, believe are proper legal, fundamental planning principles, not potential gain for the city or any of the other allegations that have been made in that last comment.
Now, I want to make the same clarification. Any comments I made on the quality of the project have nothing to do with the decision. The decision is solely on the merits of substantial conformance and the points in the staff reports. Further comments? All right, then ask council, please, vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 15, please. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is the adoption of the fiscal year 1415 budget. Just as a reminder to you, although you know this, maybe to the folks at home, you've spent at least two study sessions working on this item. The finance committee has, has spent some time with a couple of aspects of the budget. The budget has been available and is posted on the website as a, as the proposed form, and it looks like this. There's three versions, the capital improvement plan, the performance plan, and the budget detail. And we have a brief presentation just to recap some of the changes, because usually we propose a budget and then you will suggest changes to those, and those are in the budget checklist. So we'll go through those quickly. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, balanced budget has a big CIP investment of $61 million. The employees are contributing a record $7.4 million in pension contributions. The debt level is still quite conservative at 4.6% of general fund revenues. This maintains our AAA implied credit rating. It shrinks the workforce down, as noted, from about 833 a few years ago to 727 today. We add a public safety officer, a police officer for the crime suppression unit. We also change some of the, we focus more on paramedic service versus loan, versus firefighters. And then it also uses a cash that you've saved up and put in reserve accounts for our big park projects, Marina Park and Sunset Ridge, as well as information technology to make ourselves a little faster and smarter, hopefully. Next slide, please. These are, this is a reminder of the position changes, that we're in the proposed budget. And the next slide, or on the budget checklist, you can see we go down a little bit lower to 727 from the proposed budget. We also put on the budget checklist that part-time fiscal clerk that we talked about last time for the bids. Next slide, please. This is the budget checklist. It's a fairly detailed little document there in small font. This is where we go through and take changes that you've suggested, as well as some that we know are important to do. We've, we've talked about a lot of them with you. How about the next slide? That's, this is the operating side. This is the CIP side, where we really look at, now that we're so close to the end of the fiscal year, what CIP items may have some remaining need versus some carryover that can be returned to the general fund. You, you'll see a peek at those. We, next slide, please. We also update revenue estimates, again, as we get much closer here to June 30th. Next slide, please. These are all the CIP rebudgets. Just as a reminder for the folks at home, all of our capital projects don't end automatically on June 30th, and we don't, we declare them done, and what a wonderful thing it is that they all finish at once, and we start them all, new ones, the next day. So these are, these are how we but carry those over in terms of, of budget, where you've got a project underway and you need to bring some of the funding for it into the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Continuing on how the rebudgets work, you can see there's about $3.5 million in rebudgets. Next slide. So the actions that we ask you today is to hold this public hearing, to receive public input. You could approve the budget checklist all at once if you'd like, if you're happy with it. You could certainly ask questions about any aspect of the budget, and then finally adopt a resolution, adopting the budget. And I clarify, in the resolution, we also talk about a couple of positions that have salary range changes, and I wanted to make sure that was clear to you. So with that, we've got Dan Matashevitz, the Finance Director, and Susan Giangrande, our Budget Manager, and myself, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Questions from the council? Councilman DeGru.
Yes, I have several questions. We have now the signal synchronization technology in place, and in our society, technology has just huge inertia. You know, in a generation, we've gone from accessing a party line when using the phone on an absolutely necessary basis to constant connectivity. And with our technology, with the signal synchronization system, we've, we've put out this infrastructure. What are our plans to continue to optimize the infrastructure, meaning perfecting it, making it even more effective and functional as possible? And what, I suppose, what resources do we have to do that? If, I'd really like to understand if we have adequate staffing to optimize this technology now that it's out there.
Do you want to take your questions one at a time? We're happy to do that.
Sure.
I'll bring Dave Webb up to maybe answer that question. You can start reading the phone book, too, Dave.
All right. I brought it with me. Thank you. That's a very good question. We've invested a lot in this. We are now in the process of finishing the program, the last two phases, but in the, in the other side of that, we're actually working on the software side. There's some software updates we're looking at. They have software that kind of teaches itself now, and our first rollout will be Newport Boulevard because it's a very complex system there. So it'll start learning the traffic patterns and maybe do some self-adjusting versus us manually doing it. We are spending more time operating the system, as you've seen some of our news flashes, that we're looking at certain things with the fire and things, and we can react with that. We have a meeting coming up with the police department, maybe how we can help them and assist them on certain large events. We have brought in some contract staff, too, to kind of backfill some of our staff. And I've got, some of my guys work in overtime remotely on the weekends, but I, I think at this point, we're just kind of monitoring it. We may grow. We're, we're looking also at intelligent transportation systems, maybe putting in signage and remote sensors that'll actually monitor our speed and things like that. You notice, for instance, Councilman Selish just recently asked me a question. It has to do with the freeway system and how they check the times, and you'll see these signs that say 20 minutes to the five and things like that. They've got inductor loops throughout their system that kind of monitor speed and traffic, and it feeds back to their computers, and then they push that out into the network, and that's what you'll find on your iPhone, how you find that. We might be able to start doing that kind of stuff. It's kind of expensive. We're looking at it, but we're just starting to get to that point.
Okay. So with your contract help, then, you have adequate resources, because I know the City of Irvine, there are like three or four people in their traffic room.
We could be short on resources. It depends. The staff right now is willing to work overtime sometimes, but if we get into a lot of weekend monitoring, we may have to hire some part-time folks that'll come in and be trained to work on the weekends. If you want extended hours, we just have, started having that discussion, and I am getting a little resistance because they're so busy on other projects. So I might have to talk to the city manager about if that's a need, or start looking at some part-time staff there. Did I get all your questions?
I just want to follow on, just very briefly. This has to do with the overtime situation and whatnot, especially on the weekends on the peninsula during the high peak ingress, egress hours. Just to encourage you to make sure that you've got manual, you've got eyes on the cameras, if you will, on the weekends during the summer and on special holidays on the peninsula. So I hope you've got flexibility in your budget to make sure that that gets covered, whether by contract or by city employees.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would agree with your emphasis on, we've spent a lot of money on this. You've just got to keep it working and improving it as we can. And then my second question is, appreciate that you highlighted in the resolution, any salary adjustments, and then those are the, there aren't other salary adjustments, those are limited to the ones in the resolution.
The, the resolution allows the council, or asks the council, to actually change a couple of salary ranges. Your council alone controls salary ranges. The overall budget would accommodate agreed-upon MOU changes?
Sure.
That's, that's the substance of that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Further council questions?
Is this the appropriate time for these recusals, or what's going on here?
Yeah. The way, the way it works is that you have to recuse yourself from a specific item. So if an item that you have a conflict related to in the budget comes up for discussion tonight, then you can recuse yourself from that specific item. But under the FUPC rules, you could vote on the budget as a whole without, without having a recusal. In the previous instances, when we talked about it, we were talking about those specific elements that was appropriate to be recusing.
I've seen no further comments from council. I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone from the public like to speak on the budget item?
My name's Lisa Walter, and I'm the Executive Director of Susan G. Coman here in Orange County. I'm here alone tonight because I knew that you didn't want a room full of pink soldiers. I was advised by Keith Curry last year that council wouldn't take, take lightly to that. So I just wanted to give, I told my survivor committee, stay home. I just wanted to give some feedback on the special events funding portion of your budget, and I know it's tiny, but I want to make sure you hear from the public about this. You've got quite a mix of events in your special events grant funding. It's a lot of wine and food and parades and a yacht race. And in the nonprofit community, and for me, I, we've been trying the last And in the nonprofit community, and for me, I, we've been trying the last couple of years to figure out what you care about. And bringing in dollars and promoting Newport Beach, that makes sense to me, and, and we tried to make the case that bringing 30,000 people for the Race for the Cure, that we're filling the Marriott and shopping and eating on a Sunday morning and going to Fashion Island was a benefit to Newport Beach, but that didn't seem to work in our favor. We tried to look at, are you wanting to support charity events and help people in Newport Beach, and, and that doesn't seem so much reflected in this. So I want to say that I truly think that the special event grant system is really indecipherable. It lacks true community input. It puts this strange mix of events together, wine festivals and, and a Relay for Life and a Race for the Cure, but it does seem to reflect your values. Newport Beach was a founding host of the Race for the Cure 23 years ago, and we had a wonderful 18 years of council and staff champions who truly demonstrated that they cared about the Race for the Cure being in Newport Beach. But the last few years, you've all been invited. We haven't had a mayor join us on stage or shoot the gun off at the starting line. We haven't had any more proclamations. And I'm glad you enjoy parades, but I wonder if you felt the way the community celebrates breast cancer survivors and mourns the people that we've lost. And we see that on the backs of, the sign backs that people wear on the day of the Race for the Cure. They've lost their moms, they've lost their grandmothers. And it's an event that raises money to provide treatment and further breast cancer research. Anyway, I get the message that you're understand, you're sending around the types of special events that you value and you fund. It is incorrect on this proposal that the amount suggested covers our permit fee. I think you'll want to hear my next statement, if I may continue.
You may.
Thank you. It doesn't cover the permit fee. We don't feel entitled to any funding. We do want to be in a municipality that values and wants to be the host of our event. So I would like to withdraw our request for any support from your special events budget. We'll pay your bills, your 15 or $20,000 in bills. Will be the only Race for the Cure of 120 Race for the Cures in the United States that will pay their host committee for police and fire and traffic services. And we'll hold the 23rd Annual Race for the Cure on September 28th this year, and then we will move on.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public like to comment on the budget?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It doesn't sound, look like there's a big crowd here tonight to comment on the budget, but there are a lot of pages in the budget, and many pages I could comment on, but I can't do that in three minutes. So I was just going to speak about three different things. First, we've been told in the study session that one of the improvements we've made in Newport Beach is that the employees here are now paying their employee share of their CalPERS bench benefit, which in some years ago, they had not. And I wanted to say, for those who read the budget detail pages for each department, we still have a line item that makes it look like we, the taxpayers, are paying that EE contribution, and I find that way of reporting it extremely confusing to the public. We're told we're paying it, and then there's a correction somewhere else in the budget, a negative item saying we're not really paying it. And then what's even more confusing to me in these salary range adjustments, in the staff report I read that went with that, the reason for one of the salary range adjustments is we need to raise the pay to compensate for the higher contribution that the employee has to make. So if we are giving the employee more money to pay the contribution that they are supposed to pay, I don't really see how that is the employee paying the contribution, whether or not I understand how it's reported in the budget. Second comment I wanted to try to make is, again, I know the city staff makes a good effort to try to explain things to the public, but some of it is still quite opaque. And looking at the resolution that you're passing tonight, on the second page of it, the very first section of the actual now, therefore, what the city council is doing, says that the total appropriation you're approving is $296 million, but after you take away the internal charges, it's $278 million. I went through all the budget documents, you know, computer searching through them, trying to find out, what is this internal charges of 18 million dollars that it's talking about? I could not find that explained to the public anywhere, where those charges are, what they are. I assume one department is performing a service for somebody else. One of them calls it expense, one of them revenue, or maybe it's something totally different. I do not know what it is. And then the third thing, at the study session, where the staff made an effort to show how you had spent your discretionary funds that you have each year, slide went by kind of fast at the study session. I went back and reviewed it, now that the city clerk has posted it, and I cannot tell from the slide which of you, it shows things that we, money went through. It doesn't say which of you authorized that, and again, the slide was not at the end of the fiscal year, and I went back to the last year. We never see anywhere how the year ended in any of the line items, including your discretionary funds, and who spent what on what. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public like to make comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, to bring it back to the council. Move the item. We have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously?
Thank you. Item number 16, please.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Mike Pizzani is going to conduct, help you conduct this public hearing. You've seen this last time when you set the notice, so. I stalled enough, so you could get up here, Mike.
Thanks. Mayor Hill, members of the council, Mike Pizzani, co-director of Municipal Operations, acting co-director. Tierra Verde Industries of Irvine has requested to become a franchise trash hauler in the city. They were established in 1997. They're predominantly a green waste hauler. They wish to start collection in the city Newport Beach. They currently operate a processing facility located at the Great Park in Irvine, and if approved this evening, they'd become the 33rd hauler in the city. This franchise, like all the others, would expire in March of 2017.
Thank you.
That's really not that far away when you think of these things. And so is staff beginning to work on ideas of maybe consolidation and that sort of thing?
Yes. And now, the middle of 2014, probably early 2016, we will start and go through the process and kind of figure out how we want to do that for fewer haulers, or, you know, we've always been open and let everybody have a chance to work here, so we'll have to see where that goes.
It just seems to me there's a lot of trucks.
Councilman Curry.
We approve the item. Second.
All right. Any further council comments? Anyone from the public like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2014-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach granting a non-exclusive solid waste franchise to Tierra Verde Industries, a California corporation, to provide solid waste collection services upon the city streets and within the city of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Item number 17, please.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this next item involves the rates for recycled water, and we brought this first to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee spent some, some time on it and have recommended that it come forward to you. George Murdock is here to give you a short staff report, if you'd like, otherwise entertain questions, but I saw a couple of heads nodding, maybe a short staff report. Okay. George?
Summary. Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And I can't find the PowerPoint either, so the clerk.
No, that'd be a very short staff report.
It'll be really short. See it on there. Oh, wait, right here. Well, thank you for letting me speak. I'll try to go quick on this. So this is in regards to the city's recycled water rate. Just a brief background on recycled water. So this is recycled water, the purple signs you see on the street. This is treated wastewater that's non-potable use, so it's not for drinking water, but used just for the irrigation purposes. We'll use it for center medians, parks, schools, and the golf courses. Currently, the city's using about 150 million gallons of water per year with just five customers. So we have 14 connections and five customers that include the two big users, Big Canyon Country Club and Newport Beach Country Club. And then we also included, we have Our Lady Queen of Angels and East Bluff School are now using recycled water. And again, as I just mentioned, the city uses it for center medians. The water we purchase is from the Orange County Water District as part of the Green Acres Project. This was a conservation effort that was done back in the early 90s. The city started purchasing water in about 1996. We do own and operate two recycled water pump stations. So for recycled to get onto the two golf courses, Big Canyon and Newport Beach Country Club, the city purchased, constructed two pump stations, which is the picture on the lower right. That happens to be the Big Canyon Country Club, so we have to provide the pressure for those courses to, to take the water. So real quickly on the current rates, so the city entered into end-user agreements with our customers in 1996 by, by means of an end-user agreement. And they set the commodity rate, which is the usage fee, that's the per 100 cubic foot fee, at 80% of the potable water rate. That was common with all customers from the Orange County Water District. However, in, if you recall, we raised the water rates in 2010 as a result of our increased costs to purchase potable water. So potable water was tracking our cost to buy import and groundwater, whereas recycled water is set by the Orange County Water District Board and has been raising about 2% per year since 1996. So the gap got a little bigger from 2010 to 2014. So we recognized the need that we needed to study the rates for recycled water, and after a competitive RP, RFP process, we hired HFNH Consulting to do a recycled water study. The study analyzed, of course, the revenues, expenditures, estimated future costs for water purchases, and then our maintenance and operations of those two pump stations. The study did recommend that we reduce the commodity rate, so that's the usage fee, and change the structure, which I'll talk about in a moment. The study recommends a five-year rate establishment, so this is so we don't have to go through the Prop 218 procedure every year. This is very similar to what we did with the water rate. So the current rates are, for recycled are divided into two components. The fixed charge, which is that monthly fixed fee, which is based on the size of the connection. So if you have a larger connection, then you pay more monthly. The commodity charge, which I mentioned earlier, is set at 80% of the potable water rate. The study proposes that we, we change that, that we still charge a fixed fee for our monthly fixed costs, the monthly service charge, but then change the commodity charge to match what we're paying OCWD for the water. So, so we would get away from tracking the potable water rate at 80%, but set the commodity charge exactly what our costs are. And then implement a pump station charge. So as I mentioned, the two pump stations at Big Canyon Country Club and Newport Beach Country Club serve only those golf courses and no other customers. So the, the costs that we incur for maintaining, operating, and fixing those stations would be charged to those two golf courses or country clubs. So this is what the proposed rates look like. So currently, you can see that then the inches is the, on the very far left, is the meter size, so from 5/8ths all the way to an 8-inch meter. That's the monthly, the fixed fee that we would charge. And then the commodity charge, which right now we're, we're charging $2.46, would drop significantly down to about 86 cents. The pump station charge would be added on top of that for those customers that have pump stations. I did put a bullet on here that said, we are recommending that the commodity charge be adjusted annually to match our costs. So Orange Canyon Water District is, has a MET subsidy that they, they receive to keep their rates low, and their board sets their, the recycled rate at 80% of what their groundwater costs are. So we have no control over what they, what they charge us for that recycled water. So in one year, for some reason, they lost the MET subsidy, or they had a catastrophic issue, and they needed to raise their rates, we needed the ability, or will need the ability to change that commodity charge. Now, of course, historically, it's been 2% per year for the last 10 years, so we don't anticipate that. So we'd like to leave it there, but in the ordinance, if we could leave that pass-through charge, that pass-through clause, which is very common, we could change just what we pay OCWD for that water. All customers, of course, will see a reduction in their bill. It ranges from 40 to, to 60% of what they're currently paying is going to go down. The next step, should you approve of these rates and this structure, we would then, you could direct staff to send out proposition 218 notices, very similar to what we did with, with the potable water, to, to the customers and the property owners, and then that would start the 45-day public notice period. At the end of the 45 days, the closest council meeting after that is August 12th. At that time, we would, you could tabulate the protests, conduct a public hearing, of course, you could hear from the public, and at that point, then you could adopt the rates. If less than the majority of the protests, if you have less than the majority, then you can, you can raise the rates. So in summary, that's really quickly.
You mean, lower the rates?
We'll lower the rates, I'm sorry.
So let's be very clear about that.
I'm used to increasing, it's not used to lowering.
Let's be very clear about that, that the action here, because it's a little bit confusing, but it's, it amounts to a cut of between 40 and 60%, I hear you say.
Reduction.
For the reduction for the current users of the recycled water.
Yes.
Mayor Hill? Moreover, it is also moving away from an abstracted indexed rate to the true cost of the service and the commodity, which I really appreciate. I've seen that in how we've looked at some of our other rate structures, and I would just encourage us to do that with all future rates, fees, whether it be a traffic impact fee, any other development impact fee. We are charging for the cost of the service that we're delivering. I really applaud you on this, George.
I would move approval of the rate reduction item.
I'll second that.
I just have a couple of questions for, for George. Do we use any of this water for any of our own landscaping, irrigation, medians, parks, and stuff, so forth?
Yeah, we, we do. The Benita Creek Park, it currently takes recycled water, the East Bluff Park we added two years ago, Center Medians along East Bluff Drive and along, on Jamboree, and then just this year, we added Bristol Street. So we add a connection or two. Our limitations are really the infrastructure. It ends at Santa Barbara, but yes.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I thought it was, an infrastructure thing and not a supply problem.
It's being characterized as a rate reduction, but when I look at your chart, it talks about a monthly service charge, which increases. So for example, if you have 5/8th of an inch pipe, is that what that refers to?
Yes. It's the meter size.
Okay, meter size, okay. Then it almost doubles from year one to year five. If you go from, from a 3-inch, you go $138 to $204.
Right.
So you're actually, some of those fixed costs are, are increasing. So it sort of depends on how much water you use, that you, you can't really state that your bill is going to go down, because if you're not using a lot of water, you're still paying a big upfront increase in the, in the meter size.
We shifted our fixed costs to, truly to the fixed fee. If you look in the staff report on the second sheet, I believe we have a chart in there that shows how much each customer, how much their monthly bill is going down.
We do have pretty regular history of the customers' bills, because as George mentioned, there's just a handful of them. So we have, we know their use, we know their history, and this is the projection of the rate reduction they'd receive.
In other words, the percentage of their bill allocated to water cost versus the percentage allocated to equipment cost is significantly different.
That's right. That's right.
And the reduction in water cost is so great that their overall bill is significantly lower than it was before.
That's right.
But if we're going to mirror OCWD costs, right, of water, of the actual commodity, we don't control that. I mean, they could go up 5%. So it's all a pass-through. So you can't really say, how do you say that your rates are, how can you project a rate reduction when you don't have any control over the cost of the commodity?
Again, historically, those rates have been, they've received that MET subsidy for well over 10 years, and we don't anticipate that was changing. On page five of the staff report, I guess it was, I'm sorry, not the second page, we took each customer and then we showed you what the monthly charge was and what they've been, historically been paying. And, and the mayor is right. So the, the monthly fixed fee is such a small portion of their bill compared to what their consumption costs are. So every one of them goes down, one of them, Big Canyon, of course, is the biggest savings. Their bill, their monthly bill will go down by 60%. So I guess I consider that a reduction, that their monthly bill will go down, based on the, the commodity charge going down almost by half.
Okay, but OCWD beyond our control could increase the commodity charge?
They could.
Okay. And for sure, our fixed, fixed, the fixed component is going up. Go.
Correct.
Although there could be, there's a lot of room there for OCWD. Do you raise their rate before the customer is actually disadvantaged under this? And so I, I feel fairly confident in the planning horizon, these customers will continue to enjoy reduced costs. Picking up on, are you done, Leslie? Picking up on Councilmember Petros's concern, we do in fact analyze our fee structure for cost when we set our fee rates. We have a regular program every year where we analyze a segment of our fee structure. That analysis is done by an outside consultant. I think the most recent example was our fire fees. We had quite a lot of change there, and it took us a little while to understand it, but that was just one example. And so to help you feel a little better about that, Tony, we do exactly that. And my recollection is, pretty much every year, we've got a percentage of our fees that actually go down, and then other fees that go up. And it's all based on a cost analysis performed by an independent consultant. And so this is another example where the city plays it straight. When our costs go down, our fees go down. When our costs go up, our fees go up. And I'm glad to see that we do go both directions with these fee analyses. I would just emphasize, so that we're not creating confusion, I mean, the actual numbers. Here's one that's paying $16,800 a month in their reclaimed water bill that's going to go down to $8,717, or 48% reduction. They're going to save $8,000 a month on their water bill. Here's one that's paying 13.6, it's going to go to 5.5. Paying 6.5, going to 3.6. The savings are significant, and I think this is the right thing to do.
These are really high-use accounts. They're not like your home account that could have a 1-inch or an inch and a half or a 5/8ths connection.
These are 8-inch lines, 6-inch lines.
Well, they're, it's, all it is is irrigation, so a big deal, yeah. Big commodity.
I believe we have a motion on the floor, and I believe we have a second. Do we have further comments? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Item number 18, please.
Mr. Mayor, this last item, we don't have a staff report for you. I, I continue to try and confuse you as to what items I put on current business versus the consent calendar, and that's my problem with the agenda software, not anyone else's. So here it is. It's, it's a weed abatement.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to get in the weeds on this one? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Further questions or comments? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Before we move to the motion for reconsideration, I would just like to emphasize something that we've done this evening. We only do this once a year, and tonight, once again, we have passed the budget that we will operate under for the next fiscal year. And just so the public is reassured at home, that we have done this as we've had all throughout the recession without dipping into our reserves for operation. Our overall expenditures, we talk about the budget, numbers are numbers, but the big numbers include all of our capital. When we get to our actual operations, our operations are going from $286 million down to $278 million, a reduction in expenditure. Our bonded debt costs are 4.6% of our gross revenue, and we retain our AAA implied credit ratings as being one of, by three of the largest, the three largest credit rating entities in the United States, and one of the very few cities in the state of California that has that kind of credit rating. We'll be paying $27.4 million towards our pension costs this year, an ever-increasing number, but we have that under control, and we have the ability this year, and we will have the ability in the years' future. And once again, our employee count is going down. It was a high of 833 about four or five years ago, and it'll be down to 727 this year. So we are doing it better, we are doing it faster and more efficiently, and a lot of that is from the money that we have spent very wisely on technology. And all of that is focused on the quality of life that we provide to the residents of Newport Beach, how our residents look, how our neighborhoods look, how our streets look, and the tremendous activities that we have for our seniors and our youth in the parks that we provide. And with that, I will ask if there are any motions for reconsideration.
Seeing none, we adjourn.